Welcome everyone to the September 11, 2024 meeting of the Liberty Lake Planning Commission. We're calling it to order and I'm gonna change the agenda just a bit. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first. And please remain standing after for a moment of silence for the 3,000 of our citizens who didn't get to go home 23 years ago. So would you lead us?
Commissioner Boyer. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Roll call please.
Okay, Joe Mann.
Here.
Tom Solberg.
Here.
Jim Bomker. DG Garcia. Charlie Jenks.
Here.
Dale Robbins. Phil Foryer.
Here.
Gene Hueschel.
Here.
And Troy Monix.
Here.
Thank you.
I'm going to excuse our.
I haven't heard from Commissioner Rawlins. Did you hear if he was coming or not?
He should have.
But I wanted to take a motion to excuse Commissioner Garcia and Bomker and.
Not Robbins.
And Robbins, I'm sorry. I'll catch up in a minute.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Thank you. General business, review the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda from any commissioners or staff? We need to prove the minutes of August 7th. Everyone have a chance to look that over. Any changes, differences? Entertaining motion to approve. Moved by Commissioner Jenks.
Second.
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 Commissioner Sawyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. So now we have workshop comprehensive plan logo. What have we come up with?
Well, so at our last meeting, we mentioned we were gonna create a branding subcommittee. So we did. And then we held a meeting on August 28th. Two planning commission members and one community engagement commission member attended. Oh, no, we had. Should start out with the logo.
Can we advance through this and see if there's? Oh, I just.
One more.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah, yeah, we're done.
Okay.
So at the meeting, we brainstormed the slogan. Which we came up with. And then we used the AI to. We put the slogan into our AI source that we have and it generated a logo kind of based off the slogan and based off some other concepts. And then we hired a consultant to kind of take that, clean it up, make it professional looking. And use a vector graphics so that we can enlarge it and it won't deteriorate at all. Go to the next slide. And so this is the slogan that we came up with. Imagining our future, that's the main slogan. And then kind of the sub-slogan under that is guiding our growth. And we'll also at times use Liberty Lake 2046 as part of the slogan. And go ahead. So this was what the AI came up with for our logo. Hmm hmm. You know, kind of a background behind the city, you know, so let's go ahead and advance it. And then we selected a consultant to kind of clean this up for us. And on the left-hand side is the first version they came up with. And then on the right-hand side is what's supposed to be the final version. So. What we're looking at is. You know, a motion from the commission to use this logo for the comprehensive plan update. And then we'll go ahead and put that on the public engagement plan and take it to council. And then when they approve the public engagement plan, they're also approving the logo and the slogan at the same time.
Has community engagement seen this as well?
They haven't. No, this is the first time it's been revealed. I also have a little handout. One's passing along, but so you can see it, kind of how it printed out, how it looks. Thank you. It's different on paper than it is on the screen a little bit.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments? Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. Excuse me. Why are we doing this?
That was my question.
The logo?
Yeah.
Just to kind of identify specific comprehensive plan documents or media that's used for the comprehensive plan. Most communities do it. We're gonna be creating a website right on Zen City. And so we're wanting a theme, colors, just something to create a whole kind of brand for the comp plan.
We've got a city logo.
We do.
Correct?
Sure. Yep.
And it's a nice logo. So my question is, if you have that and it's known throughout the community and probably the state. What's the purpose in doing? I mean, you could have the city logo and the comprehensive plan titled underneath it. Wouldn't that satisfy? I mean.
It's, that's a possibility to do that.
What did this cost?
The. That was, I don't remember the exact amount, but it was, it was under, we just had to get three quotes. It was under like a bid requirement, so it was not a large sum of money. We basically gave them the AI-generated version and then they went off of that.
Okay.
So it was pretty simple, straightforward process. And we just, we needed that because the AI version. Can you go back a slide? You'll see, it's got a background color. So whenever you post it on something, you're gonna see the whole square. Some of it's faded out a little bit. It's not a vector graphic, so we can't enlarge it. When we do enlarge it, it'll get grainy. So that's why we went with a professional to fix it up for us. Most communities that have started their comp plan process update have gone with a separate logo to specifically identify, you know, media. Whether it be a website, a map, or handouts to identify that this is part of the comp plan update. So we're just kind of going along with what other communities have done.
So and this kind of ties in with the idea of branding for this document.
Yes.
And which raises a whole nother question, which is in this document, branding for a comprehensive plan. I just. I can see that for some kind of commercial enterprise or a new business or. But I'm not quite sure I buy. Pardon me. I say, I'm not sure I buy into doing branding and spending money on a logo for a comprehensive plan. I just, I mean, I'm just having a tough time with that. Just me.
With respect, the last meeting, we had an agenda item that discussed this. So. With the members that were present, we moved ahead on this. Both Joe and I were part of the group. And I don't remember whether anybody from.
We did have one.
Community Engagement, didn't they actually?
I think it was Summer was there.
Summer came in late. That's right. And. The questions that you asked were part of the discussion and then because this is Washington State, not Hawaii. Almost all, almost all of the comp plans are now being branded and they have a logo. And so what we did is we took a look at some of the comparables that are in Washington State and there's examples of them that are on the site and came up with what we thought would be one to be more representative. So. That's.
Did I infer anything about Hawaii or how did that? Get into the discussion. I'm not sure. Well, the truth of the matter is this, underlying all of this is community engagement.
I got you.
I got you. So what we've got to do is some marketing. And what this is all about is the beginning of the marketing. We have got to sell this to our community to get them involved. And so what we decided was we do have, the city does have a beautiful logo, but it's tired. It's been around a long time. And it's worn out. And we needed something fresh, bright, that can generate enthusiasm from the citizens. Because the truth of the matter is, we're not getting a lot of participation from the citizens in government. Not nearly as much as we should for a city of 14,000 people. I mean, you look at the event we had last night. We had a city of 14,000 people. Maybe we had 25 citizens there last night, maybe. So what we're trying to do with this is give it some brightness, some enthusiasm. It's marketing. It's pure and simple. That's what we're doing is marketing. And so that's why we feel we need a logo. We need something to capture people's imagination. To see that they have a part in this. If you'll remember when we had the joint meeting with the community engagement, I said, we've got to tell people what's in it for them. And this is the first step of that. So that's why. And it's not a terribly big expense. I understand your concern. But it's something we really need to differentiate and try to get people enthusiastic about. So other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, as I look at that, I want to smile. That is a very inviting type logo. I like the idea that Liberty Lake is set aside below the logo. It is one of those things that is actually causes me to want to participate. In other words, it's listening to the emotion in me that I think we want to have established in our comprehensive plan. When you compare it to the city's logo, city's logo is very, very dark. It's hard to read. It doesn't do the same thing. So we've already put the time, energy and effort into this thing. I would strongly recommend that we use the logo on the right.
Other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion. Move to proof. The logo on the right.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Commissioner Monix. Any discussion? At all? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, good questions. So thank you. That's what we needed to do. So the public engagement plan.
All right. So go to the next one here. All right. So at the last meeting, we had a few comments on the draft plan. And so this, these slides here kind of highlight what those comments were and how we addressed them. And I just want to point out to you, first of all, we did have a little formatting issue when we made it PDF. I didn't realize that. So we'll go through and remove some of this stuff on the first few pages to make it look a little prettier when we do the final draft. One of the first comments was the external stakeholders order. We had the business owners too far down on the list and the developers too high. So we've switched that around. The business owners are now, I believe, second and the developers are now on the bottom of the list. The vulnerable populations, there's a lot of discussion. We didn't like the wording or the grouping categorization of those groups. So that's been changed. We're now going with age, disability, economic capability and geographic location. And then next slide. We also had a few additional engagement strategies that people want to include. So those have been added. Churches, veterans groups, grocery stores in the hub. It's also noted that staff is not going to be able to do all of the outreach on our own. So we'll be looking for volunteers from the planning commission and the community engagement commission to help us out. And for the desired outcome section, one of the comments was how are we gonna measure that? So one way we're gonna do that is we're gonna keep a tally of all the participants at all our engagement events. We'll include that as part of that at the end as an appendix to the plan. And we're trying to compare that to the previous planning effort, comprehensive planning effort that we did to make sure, did we get a higher, more turnout for this one than the one, I think it was 2015? And additionally, we're gonna look at sending out a community survey at the end of this to to see what did the public think? How did we do? Were we open and transparent during this process? And so that would be something we complete at the end to evaluate ourselves. Then next slide. Oh, sorry. So anyways, that's, all those changes have been made and we're looking for a motion to take this version of the public engagement plan to the council for their approval. And it's going to be noted that it's a living document. It may change a little bit throughout the course of the comprehensive planning effort. But we want to get an approval of it so that we can get reimbursed as part of our planning grant.
I have a couple of questions. I've been through it a couple of times. On the website, link to the engagement platform, one of the things that came up at the open house last night was the search engine that we have is very difficult for people to use. And I know this is beyond where you are and it's more in the IT guys. Area, but that search engine should be able to find pretty much any word or any idea that some, one of our citizens might be looking for. There were several citizens last night that said it was almost impossible to find things now on our website.
So when you go into our website, you use the search feature?
Yeah.
Not finding what they're looking for.
One lady said she's pretty decent, but it took her 45 minutes to find out about street trees and who's responsible for them and all of that.
Sure.
So it's just that the search engine just needs some tweaking, I think, is what.
Okay, we can talk to staff about that.
Can I add to that? I've asked David a couple of times when I was on the council to address that. And the response that I've gotten from him every time was you'd have to completely overhaul that portion of the city's website to be able to do a word search because some of those documents are 20 years old. So I don't know that. I don't know where that is gone since I've left the council, but I've asked about it a couple of times now. And since then, what they've been able to do is at least get all of the changes in order instead of by date. So at least that way, if you, if you know the ordinance number, you can find it quickly.
Right.
Or search for an ordinance name, that helps. But I totally agree, but I think it's.
Well, I think after last night.
Is all I'm saying.
Yeah, after last night, I think the priority has gone up because we're all, all eight members were there last night.
I don't disagree. I guess a little history on that, that's all.
Yes, sir.
I was there with Phil and some of our histrionics about the issues. I meant history. What I would suggest maybe for us is that if we're gonna have the comp plan be findable on the city page, that it have its own separate tab. The search engine issues that Phil raised while we were on the council. I raised during community engagement commission meetings. The community engagement commission has also tried to raise those issues. And so there hasn't been much done. It, to some degree, it has become a little bit easier with some of the new things that are being put on there. But as you can see, the response to those new things is minimal as compared to, and that would include for me, if we're gonna do a survey at the end lands, that we do our own survey, that we do not have that survey put in the same kind of format as where you have to sign into someplace. And then you have to have a second login in order to get to it. And then if you don't use the exact words, and I don't know why AI hasn't helped in this. Because almost every other search engine, if you put in the first letter of something that is popular in the, then it'll give you suggestions to go to. And ours is not user-friendly at all.
Okay.
That's not it. Last night, I hope they heard it. But the same council that Phil and I were on raised that issue when it first started. So.
Okay. I have several other points.
Okay.
On, under social media, and I know this is way out there. Is it possible to friend every citizen of the city that is on social media? Do we have a list of all our citizens? The tax rolls, I'm sure would have it. The Census Office would have it, but I don't know.
Property owners, yes, but.
Yeah, I just, it's just an idea that occurred to me that if we could friend everybody, then we'd know if they're looking or not to the, to Facebook or Twitter or wherever, Instagram, all that. It's just an idea.
Yeah, I'm trying to think how that would be. If it was like Facebook, I think they're probably using just their name and it would be something we could do. But if it's some other format, they might not have the same kind of username.
I don't know enough of the technology myself. I just, it's a question.
Well, one thing we could do is to like note on our website to friend or follow us on our social media.
Yeah. Good point.
Yeah.
When you mentioned apartment complexes, it also occurred to me, we've got a couple of retirement homes here. I know they're assisted living, I think, if I'm not mistaken, but you might want to add those to that list of places we might.
Okay, yeah.
Talk to, but you've got a lot of, probably a lot of knowledge in that retirement home.
Yeah.
Go to the motion, for sure.
Yeah. And also the other thing about posting things, since we are marketing the hotel, restaurants, service businesses like hair salons, nail salons, those kind of things would be another place we could get the word out quite a bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
I'll be quiet now for a while.
I think those would be simple changes where I could just note them in existing segments, just add like another sentence or something.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, that's something we can add.
Yeah, and I still think we can, no one objects, we can still approve this with those minor changes. And move on and get it before council.
Sure. Yeah.
I just have a couple of questions on here. If I were a council member sitting and I was gonna be looking at this and you were asking me to approve it, if I were a council member, I would ask you two questions. One, do you have a schedule? And number two, what's the budget? So what?
Sure.
The council must approved in the past an allocation of funds to do the comprehensive plan. I would imagine, I would assume, I hope they did. How much of that total budget is this effort? Do we know?
Writing the engagement plan.
I know it was part of our, what we're calling the PUG grant. So our planning, our planning.
Okay.
Plan update grant.
I think it's good to have that number, number one. And number two, and I'd mentioned this before in the same meeting, looking at the same document. There's an awful lot to do between now and June of 2026. There is this Gantt chart that shows you all the tasks on the left and then who's gonna be participating, the stakeholders, external and internal. That's fine. I get that. But I, from a management perspective, I think you ought to be able to come up with a schedule that tells us, tells us and the council. You know, when are these things gonna kick off? How long are they gonna take? At least some metric to know how we're tying money to time. Because it's, both are precious commodities.
Sure. I mean, it's not super detailed, but we did include a little kind of.
I saw that.
So we were trying.
Yes, that's a Gantt chart and that, that's our timeline. But that doesn't really tell you, doesn't give any dates. There's a quarterly schedule. But.
Are you talking about dates for specific?
I'm sorry, would you speak a little louder?
Or are you saying including dates for specific outreach events?
Yes.
Sure. I mean, we don't have it planned. It's, some of it's gonna be planned, that information as we go along. One thing we're gonna be talking about later today is the kickoff date and trying to schedule that. So, yeah, we haven't even gotten that far yet. So that, that's a little more detail than we were able to get so far. Just because it involves more planning.
The other question I have is, is looking at the tasks that are involved in this and looking at, you know, this climate element of this plan. It seems to me, what I'm reading is this is being pushed, pushed to the, pushed forward. That's why we're talking about it today. But if you look at climate and you look at the impacts and you look at the issues with climate and you folks reference greenhouse gases from energy production, automobiles, infrastructure of various types. That is driven by, by, by land use. So I guess my point is why would you be doing, starting that process now when you've got a whole process to go through before you get to land use, which will really be where you're going to determine, do we have an issue with greenhouse gas or not? Or is, are these folks today starting the process to gain data to compare it? Is that, is that the?
Yeah, I mean, I'd let Amy speak more on that.
Maybe a little clarity on what the approach is.
Yeah, so we, we agree and we understand there is a nexus between climate and land use. There's transportation, our utilities. There's, there's cross-sections between all of this. Right now, the stage that we're at is data, data collection. And so our consultants are working to get the, the different sources of data of what are our biggest greenhouse gas emitters. And a lot of that is, it, there are a lot of different sources that they have to pull from, namely our local utilities. And part of what has held up some of that is getting information in a usable format from our various utilities, a Vista being a good example of their service area not necessarily matching our city boundaries and trying to kind of massage that data so that we know that the information that we're getting, and by the way, the baseline information is from 2022. That's the baseline information that we're using. So we're kind of going back a little ways to get our inventory. And that's just for the greenhouse gas sub. And so we want to make sure that the numbers that we're representing in that are clipped as tightly to our city boundaries as possible. And a lot of that information doesn't, doesn't actually clip to our municipal boundaries. So there's been a lot of data collection and analysis that's going on to try and get us those kind of baseline numbers. So we understand what we're working with when we go into talking about policies and mitigation and those types of, what are we gonna do about it? We need to know what the problem is before we know what we're gonna do about it. And so we're kind of at that stage right now with the greenhouse gas and the vehicle miles traveled reduction. There's a resiliency sub that another portion of our team is working on that is looking more at climate risk and vulnerabilities. And so they're looking more at what are the biggest risks that we're facing as it relates to climate things, namely wildfires is a big one, but there's other ones too. And so they are, basically, there's the University of Washington, Department of Ecology. There's lots of different resources that are providing us those different informations about what those climate hazards are and what they could necessarily mean. And so again, they're in a, in a data collection and putting it into a map for us so that we can kind of see not only where we are and what, what the biggest risks are, but also how that kind of compares with the people around us. And there are different environmental concerns as it relates to different.
So the answer is they're gonna start work to get baseline data.
Yes.
That you can compare against when you do have a land use plan that falls out of this process.
Well, we have a land use plan, so it's what do we need? What can we change about this land use?
Sure, it's gonna, it's gonna evolve. It's gonna have to change. Okay.
And same with our transportation and our utilities. There's all, there's, I mean, it touches on almost all of our other elements.
Okay.
And they're, they're pretty far along. They'll be here in October to give us kind of a, they're pretty much done with their data collection. And so they have a general idea of the base information that we're gonna be working from. And so that's why we've scheduled them to come next meeting and they'll go over this engagement plan and the data that they've had and be available for any questions that you have. And they are working on a data source list right now.
And that's, are you working with parametrics?
Correct.
Okay. And also, isn't a lot of this information coming from the county as well, like population growth? They're the ones that are gonna tell us what our city's gonna grow to, based on the county's population growth.
Yes, the population numbers come from Office of Financial Management. They come down to the county and then the county, as part of our PTAC, our, our regional planning team. We break it out into the individual jurisdictions and that's pretty well been fleshed out. Now we're kind of taking that number that we've been given and we're moving it into the housing stuff. So.
Okay.
But yes, that stuff does come in very close collaboration with the county, which is part of why it's difficult to give you a very accurate timeline because there's a lot of these decisions that are made outside of us that we kind of have to wait for those decisions to be made before we can move forward. So like our land capacity analysis is a big piece of our land use and we can't really do our land capacity analysis until we have our population and our housing numbers, which have to be agreed upon and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. So we have to wait for that political process to kind of move forward before we have our numbers that we can move forward with.
Have we not already been delayed by a state agency providing data to the city on housing? I think Director Key mentioned that, that we have been delayed because we've been waiting on some data from a state agency of some sort?
It's from Spokane County. We're waiting for Spokane County to, Spokane County, the Board of County Commissioners has to adopt the population projection and the housing allocation before we have our official numbers, our target numbers that we have to work.
And when do they expect to do that?
Um. We, we have meetings regularly.
Your June 26 date is coming at you like a train in a tunnel, right? Your June twenty-six date is coming at you like a train in a tunnel, right?
Yes.
And these guys are just spinning their wheels, doing whatever they want to do. Then you need to prepare, be prepared to tell the state, we can't do this in the timeframe you've given us because of this agency.
We have had, we are continuing to have those conversations with the county that time is of the essence, that we need to move forward. Um, we've kind of started moving forward in what we think is a comfortable hypothetical, so that we can start kind of getting some things in place. So once we get that final, that final, final, where we can hit the ground, hit the ground running. So there, and there's some of those numbers that for us are, are pretty um easy to estimate, as far as, you know, we know essentially, ours is a little bit easier than it is for the other jurisdictions, but from a county level, there's a lot of other um factors at play that are kind of holding up the process.
Thank you. Are we ready to entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve the.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
As I listen to the discussion and look at the outline, I thought we do have a timeline that's very specific. Um, on page ten, it's my. Am I mistaken?
Doesn't have specific dates for kickoff events. I think that's what Charlie was asking to.
Specific dates.
Yeah.
Instead of the quarter is.
Instead of the first of January.
Quarterly. Okay, um, the second thing is color is of course a very useful tool in grabbing attention, but it can also be very expensive, particularly on um when we put things out in volume. My question comes from the use of so much blue. Now, it's a small point, but when we do this in mass, I don't know how expensive that little blue logo is, but it might be a nickel. Maybe a dime.
Maybe white.
Maybe white would be better.
That's the, I, I, I don't agree or disagree with what you're saying, but that's the next portion of our workshop. Isn't the motion?
Yeah, the motion is on the public engagement plan, not that yet, we're not there yet. Is, is there a motion?
Was there a motion?
I was just going to ask to restate the motion.
Well, I was just getting ready to make the motion and that is that we um accepted the public engagement plan draft with suggested changes that Lance will be making.
Is there a second? Second, thank you, sir. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Let's move on to climate.
So as we've kind of outlined, um, in addition to the engagement plan for the, the entire comp plan, there is a separate engagement plan specifically targeting climate. Um, and this is because the climate element is a brand new element. It does not have the benefit of the public engagement that happened with the existing elements. And we need that input to develop new policies and develop and new goals and policies. So um, we have to go through a bigger and arguably separate um engagement plan. They will come together at a certain point where we will be having outreach and we'll be having kind of meetings and such about the entire plan and the climate element will be part of that. But to begin with, in order to formulate those goals and policies, we're going to have a separate, a separate engagement plan. Um, so again, this, this engagement plan was prepared by our consultants that are working on the element. Um, they will be here um next month to, to go over not only this plan, but also the work that they've been doing and to answer any questions that everybody asks.
Who are the consultants?
Mr. Chairman.
Parametrics, whoever they are.
We've met them. Mr. Chairman, I ask a question?
Sure.
Getting online and trying to find us a city that would be an analog to uh Liberty Lake, that's done one of these elements. I couldn't find one. Are we, are we like going to be the first in line to do this?
Well, so there's um communities that were supposed to adopt their comp plan in twenty twenty-four and then ask for additional time on the engagement. So I believe that there are on the climate elements. So I believe their climate elements are actually due in December of this year. Um, and then there'll be another group that theirs will be done in twenty twenty-five. Um, and ours will be done in twenty twenty-six. So right now, from what I understand, uh, most of the state is actively working on this, but nobody has actually gotten it all the way across the finish.
I see. Okay.
So. When you say that, nobody's gotten it across the finish line, who's determining the finish line and what that should look like?
Well, um, Department of Commerce is the one that reviews all of the comp plan and decides that whether or not it is at the level that it needs to be at um to receive state funding. They are not a regulatory agency, but if they say that you have met all of the boxes is when they say that their comp plan is in compliance and we are eligible for state funding.
Okay.
Um, as far as the.
So that's the real goal here.
Yes, and as far as the individual climate chapter, you can have that separate from your comp plan, reviewed by Department of Commerce, and if they approve your separate climate plan um independent of your comp plan, then should you have a challenge, they will defend your, they will defend the element for you. So that is a process that we're considering is having Commerce approve our climate element prior to approving the entire comp plan, so that if we receive a challenge, then they will be the ones that will defend it for us.
So, Phil, open Pandora's box um with regard to the email that you sent out to us, and I think it's the same issue. And thank you for bringing it up, because I think that's been a sticking point for the Planning Commission since the first time I was on it until now. It's also been an issue for the City Council um and fairly recently about and maybe we just need to be real clear as to who's expecting what and, and why would we uh need to meet their goals. And I think that the key that I heard you say, and we've heard it before too, is that it's funding for any of the projects that we want to have, and that includes any state project.
Yes.
SRTC has to go through the same thing with regard to federal and state monies too, so.
And SRTC actually has to independently approve our transportation chapter. So they review our transportation chapter and approve that independent of the entire thing. So there are several layers of review that it goes through to make sure that it's meeting the state law. But essentially what they're doing is checking to make sure that what we've done is in compliance with the RCW. And if they say that we are not in compliance with the RCW, then we are not eligible for certain state funding until we are.
So, just a suggestion would be that we, we, in the introduction, we have a portion that says in big letters, they don't have to be blue, they can be green. Why? Because I think that that's an issue for all of us, certainly in Liberty Lake.
When you say, why are you saying why as?
Why are we?
The comp plan, or, I mean, right now we're talking about the engagement plan. So are you saying?
Why are, why are we needing to be in compliance with state regulatory? And, and as you said, Department of Commerce is not actually regulatory.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, there's some nuances to that that I think last night came up too, is it, it's hard to understand some of this. So I think we need to put, why are we including this and say, well, and, and don't just say because the state told us we had to, if we don't, we want to play in the sandbox, but I, I do think there's more nuances. And uh when Phil and I were on the council, we had this discussion, and the council voted at one time to basically tell the state, no, because there was nothing in it for us. It was, it just came down without, and it didn't have strings attached to, to any money, so.
Do you have any idea? I, I looked, I brought up the budget, which is like two hundred pages of the City of Liberty Lake. It's a gigantic document. I, and I'm fairly familiar with city budgets, county budgets. And I went to the revenue source section, I could not find one reference to how much money this city gets from, from any state or county agency. Do you have any idea how much that is? How much money are we talking about?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I do know that several of our road projects have gotten a lot of funding from various state boards, like the Transportation Improvement Board, I believe was part of Kramer. Um, and so I, I think that, I know that we get a lot of transportation money. I don't know what other money. I believe that there's also some.
What's, 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 what's a lot?
I don't know. I, anything I would say would be a complete yes, but I can certainly look into it for you.
If, if you look, I'll try to help you.
If you look at the state law, the state law says if you don't comply with all these sections, the governor can issue sanctions against the city. And now it doesn't, I couldn't find anywhere where defined what the sanctions are, but it's probably money.
We don't get money. And, and she mentioned tip, but also um we have not received monies from SRTC, because we haven't been able to apply just simply because of the size of our projects as compared to the rest of the county.
Just going to say that, depends on the size of the project and whose jurisdiction it falls under.
And they're the MPO, so the, the municipal planning organization decides on what it is that the money's going to go out to. And, and as a result, we really haven't put in that many requests either. Amy, have they, have we put in any for transportation funds since you've come?
Yes.
Okay.
But those are, but those are matching funds and it's supported by the county typically on those smaller projects. But for example, the Kramer project wasn't just the Kramer, it was the additional outbound, and it was the roundabout, what was it, twenty six million or something like that?
So that was a combination of city and state money?
Correct.
Yes.
So to answer your question, how much is, we're talking about, it depends on whose jurisdictions and where the funding source coming from. Majority of what we've seen in the city is a relationship between the city and the county. Fair enough. Is that a fair statement, Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, Amy.
And with the portion that we pay, we get some of that money back from different state funds. If we meet the criteria, otherwise.
So it's not a simple answer, is what you're saying?
Well, it's a pain in the.
There is no simple answer.
If I could just add, yes, if I could add something to something Tom said about we, we pushed back against a unfunded mandate by the state before, when we were on the City Council, not at this, not at the planning commissioner level, but just to give you a little bit of history. In my opinion, this is no different. Yes, what do we get? Five hundred thousand grant money to produce a plan?
For the climate.
For the climate section, but once that's exhausted, then that's it. There's no more coming from the state. But yet, the, there's a, they passed a, a law that says every city has to incorporate this, but as I start to look through this list of uh timeline, the major project deliverables, if you just start looking at that and thinking about it, there's nothing we can really do at the local level to impact any of those, because it's all state and federally regulated. So all we're really doing here is trying to meet the state law requirement, right?
Right, and when the county drags it's.
And none of us dollars doing it.
Yeah.
So that's why I asked the question, who is doing, who's our consultants? Because they're, they're ones that are going to benefit from this five hundred thousand dollars. All we need to do is produce a plan that checks that box, so we can be eligible for other projects.
Which costs the taxpayers of Liberty, Liberty Lake money.
Understand, but it, it, for me, it's a check the box thing, and it's, once this is in place, once this is in place, the city.
You gotta look, you gotta look at the big picture. I understand that, I get that.
You could say that about everything we talk about in this world, come on.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Okay.
Alright.
So this is just on engagement. This is just how we're going to engage people to develop the, what the content of the elements.
I, I guess maybe why I said that was to back to what Tom said, the first paragraph should, about why? Nicely say what we've just said, I guess is my.
It's not going to be good enough for people that aren't.
Right.
That want to live in Montana, okay? But for us that live here, if we want to be in line for any eligible funding, check the box, get her done.
I'll make sure we have a succinct explanation of that. Okay. So, back to our engagement plan. Um, so this engagement plan is organized a little bit differently than the other engagement plan. Um, there is an introduction section. It goes over some legislative background, some history of the GMA. It also goes over some of the requirements of House Bill eleven eighty-one, which is the bill that requires us to have the climate plan, um, and some basics about um public engagement generally. Then the document goes into outreach strategies and key audiences. Um, because there are so many different types of stakeholders and they all have very different priorities as it relates to climate, um, we have kind of grouped them into these key audiences, and we have tailored strategies to engage with them to the specific audience. Um, so the key audiences that we identified were the Liberty Lake residents and surrounding community, um, implementation partners, community representatives and leaders, and the City Council and Commissions. So for each key audience, we describe the goal of the outreach. So what are we trying to achieve with each group? Um, the strategies and communication tools, what is the best way for us to reach this particular group of people? Um, the desired outcomes. So essentially, if we are successful in this engagement, what will the result be? And then each individual key audience has a, has a specified timeline. It is not specific, but it is kind of Q one, Q two, general, because a lot of this is moving and it will kind of, it will change as this process moves forward. So the document also lays out our approach to equity and inclusion. Um, House Bill eleven eighty-one is, has a very strong environmental justice component and requires us to engage with and look for solutions that will benefit vulnerable and overburdened populations. Um, there's a list on page four of the, of the engagement plan itself of these, um, these communities. Um, the equity and inclusion section says we will, we will intentionally seek input with a focus on equity. We will partner with community representatives and leaders to help us establish relationships and trust with these communities. We will meet community, community members where they are using a variety of methods. So we will host events, we will go to events, we will have kind of focus group, one-on-one, and any other kinds of opportunities that may arise in between. And we will provide outreach materials that are culturally relevant and in language-specific formats. The plan also addresses tribal engagement, so we have sent letters to each of the local tribes asking them how and when they would like to engage, if at all. And so we will kind of plan those out individually once and if we hear back from them. So then find, the document concludes with an outline of roles and responsibilities, really kind of outlining the difference between what is response, the consultant is responsible for and city staff. I also want to kind of draw everybody's attention to that red box that I put up there. Um, so here in a very short amount of time, we are going to be recruiting for our um climate policy advisory team, the CPAT. Um, and so this is just another way that we're trying to ensure, ensure that the residents' voice is reflected in the climate plan. So the primary role of this um tech, this advisory group will be um to represent the community's voice and advise the project team to ensure that recommended policies, goals, and actions are aligned with community priorities. And that comes from the charter of the group that, once we form the group, we have kind of an outline of what, what the goal is and what we're trying to achieve, and we will go over it with the group and the group will approve it and then we'll move forward.
How will that group be formed?
We are going to be um doing a variety of different recruitment methods. We're going to advertise on, online, we're similar to how we do other groups. Um, we'll advertise online, we'll kind of hopefully have this commission and our community engagement commission looking for people that should apply. Um, the application will go to the mayor and the mayor will review them, will do some kind of interviewing. She, she is looking for um a group of people that maybe isn't always involved, so she's looking for some new faces, but, and then there are some, there will reserve two seats for um a youth, um, a youth representative and an economic development representative. And a lot of that, um, the what that will, how that will be comprised is coming from guidance from Commerce. Commerce has a, a tone of guidance on how we're supposed to do these things, and so we're, we're pulling pretty heavily from that. Okay, next slide, please.
So, Amy, will that be a community group then?
Yes. Yeah, it will.
And will people apply to be on it and all that?
Yeah.
And we'll go through the process?
Mm-hmm.
And council approval?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Can I add some question in the why, sir, paragraph?
Yeah.
Can you um give reference to any House bills, Senate bills, RCWs?
Yes.
To, so somebody like me can go read it for themselves and say, oh, that's where it says we have to do this, that, and the other?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did parametrics create this or you guys?
No, they created, they created it for us, yeah. And we, through some discussions with us and some iterations.
Do you know if parametrics used a similar analog to develop this from another jurisdiction, or is it all, just, is this all original thought?
I believe that they are working on these types of things with several communities, so I think it was a hybrid of what they've seen work in other communities as well as using Commerce's guidance pretty closely. So I think it's kind of a hybrid of the two.
So does the Department of Commerce then have a, an outline as to what has to be included in this element and how you need to go about it?
Yes.
They do, okay.
This is a state level commerce we're talking?
Yes.
Yep.
It's a big, long check section on the web.
That's good to know.
Yes, it is. Okay, so.
Like a lot of plans, I, with this, I think um it might be, uh, you might be sorry you asked.
We are, we are, we are prepared for that. Um, so I use Liberty Lake residents kind of as an example. Um, so I use Liberty Lake residents kind of as an example for how we will engage key audiences. They all follow a similar format, so I won't go through all four of them, I'm just using this one as an example, the, the, the content is inside in your packet. Um, so. For this particular group, for Liberty Lake residents, our goals of outreach are to educate the public on environmental hazards and changes in weather patterns and how these changes might impact their community. Um, to inform and educate the public on the process and contents of the climate element and the comprehensive plan update. And to collect input on climate goals, policies and recommended, recommended mitigation actions. Um, so the strategies we'll use to achieve those goals are tabling at community events, online open house, public surveys. Story maps and our existing online communication tools, the website, Facebook, we have Zen City, so there's several existing outlets that we'll use. Um, and so the desired outcomes are if, if we are successful, we will have provided multiple opportunities to educate the public on the impacts of environmental hazards and changing weather. As well as the planning process and how they can get involved. And we will have collected input and feedback on the proposed goals and policies. So again, the other three key audiences follow a very similar format. And I stand for any questions or feedback you have on this draft of the document. You can, you can advance this slide.
One, the one thing here, I looked through all of this, nowhere has anybody defined climate. What, what is climate composed of? And I wrote down five things. I'm not sure they're all, but it's air, temperature, humidity, wind and precipitation. What else is there in climate?
Social.
I'm sorry?
Social.
Social?
Environment. Social.
That.
Because you have the social aspect of all of those elements that you just mentioned interacting.
Climate is. Yeah, well, I get what you're saying, but that's not really climate, that's part. That's how people interact with it socially. But I'm, what I'm just trying to get in my mind around. Uh, I had several conversations last night at the open house with people about this. And we all are pretty much in agreement, there's no middle ground when you start talking about climate. It's either, it's, climate change is a complete hoax. Or it's changing so fast, we got to do something today or the world's going to die. And that's, there's nothing in between, it seems. So how are we going to get there? How are we going to find and moderate? A plan that's going to satisfy all of that, and the answer is we won't. In my opinion, but I really would like to see somebody define climate. I mean, environment is even more difficult to confi, to define. But I, nowhere is anybody defining these terms. I'm kind of a simple thinker and I'm really trying to get from the ground to what are we dealing with here? And what do we actually have control on?
State mandate, that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
But in the introduction, having a definition, having, as we talked about with the other, having the bills that apply, so people can research where it's coming from and argue whether or not it's relevant to us.
Just a comment.
Well taken, great, great point, but yeah.
Just. Would like to know what I'm dealing with here, rather than this eretral thing that seems to be floating up here that we're supposed to do something about. I mean, it's bothered me from day one since we got the, the first spreadsheet of all the things about. What, what is climate? How do we deal with it? I mean, there are things we can do about emissions and all of those kind of things that affect climate. What is climate?
Yeah.
Anything further? Any other questions, comments? Observations?
I think for a draft, this is excellent to start.
Yeah, by the way, Lance, we went from zero to having a logo and and a, a tagline and a plan. Thank you for that, in six weeks' time, I mean, literally, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're glad you're on board.
Thank you, me too.
Uh, so next is the day for comprehensive plan kickoff meeting.
So we're looking to, to schedule our big introduction introductory meeting, this is, you know, what the comp plan is, we update. Um, we're expecting it to probably be about two, two and a half hours over at Trailhead. Um, and so we just wanted to kind of throw these dates out there and see, like, just as a starting point and see what the commissioners felt about it, they're all on a Monday. So.
Do, do we need any action on that public engagement plan?
No, it was more of an introduction, um, next meeting, we will be asking you to do something similar to what we did with the other one.
Thank you.
So it's. The eleventh of September right now, and I like the idea of doing it Mondays, but we have meetings. And stuff going on all the way through the first three weeks of October. And if we had a Monday at the end of October, I'd realize that Halloween's coming up and take us a long time to get ready for that. Wait a second, we're already advertising and Christmas. Um, I'd suggest maybe later in the month on a Monday. With our other meeting schedule.
Later in October?
Yeah, like October twenty eighth.
If we did it on the twenty eighth, we could all come in Halloween costumes, which would be appropriate.
I'm sorry. Couldn't help that.
That would change our climate.
Yeah. Commerce climate, there you go. Um, any suggestions, ideas, guys?
Any other, any other?
You know, the better.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Yeah, you just, we're just doing one day, one time or?
This is just for the first meeting, for the introductory top level, this is all of the things that we will be doing in this meeting, a meeting about meetings.
How prepared are we?
Great.
Um, we have a lot of pieces out here that we still need to bring together, but I think that we could, I think that we could do it.
How, how do you envision this meeting going? Is it going to be a presentation to the public? Um, slideshow?
Yeah.
Kind of thing?
Similar, I, I would assume, assume it to be a similar format to what, how we kind of introduce the topic to the planning commission. But also with a lot more um, opportunities for people to ask questions and for us to kind of talk about what certain things mean.
Open house type format, okay.
Where?
Trailhead.
Trailhead is what we're targeting, that's kind of part of what the dates were about, we had looked at those at Wednesdays and they are booked on all Wednesdays, so we moved it to a Monday.
Wednesdays wouldn't work anyway, for most of us, but uh, yeah, either the twenty first or twenty eighth, I would say, I don't know, other opinions?
I'm no good for the twenty eighth if you want me to be there, I have a H O A meeting, quarterly meeting to manage.
Well, let's do, I'd like to have you there myself, but.
I will be gone the last half of October. So I would not be able to attend um, the last two that are posted up.
Okay, so you, you put October fourteenth up there? In anticipation of being prepared for that, that date?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I get it.
My opinion is sooner the better, because they, these guys got a lot of work to do.
Well, that's true.
Is that actually a national holiday that day?
I believe it's Columbus Day.
Is that a national holiday?
Fourteenth Indigenous Peoples' Day, yeah. I don't know, but good question.
It's on my.
It's Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yeah. I do know there's no school that day, so.
It'll change.
There's no school, so there you go. Yep. So.
I still have to come to work, so.
That's right.
Well, me too.
Yeah, no, I'm, it's.
I would like to have as many of us there as we could.
Right.
So was that a, a show on the fourteen?
I have to prepare for my, I mean, my quarterly meeting, uh, H O A on that night, so.
Okay.
I'm open for the twenty first, but it's not about me.
Okay.
If you want to do it on.
That's a consensus, consensus twenty first?
Do it.
There's majority of the.
We just noted and approved the twenty first.
Is Mon, Monday good for the public?
Where are you out of town all the time?
I will be out of town the entire second half of October.
It might be.
You going someplace fun?
I'd like to say, yeah, maybe.
I understand, um.
So I have, so we're good for the twenty first is what we should be?
At what time?
We have not nailed that down yet, um, I'd imagine, oh, go ahead.
I'm going to give feedback on the last one, stop doing these things at six o'clock. It ruins everybody's, and especially now that schools and.
Earlier or later?
I'd say four o'clock, like we do our meetings here.
We have four, four thirty at the latest.
Who's, who are we targeting for attendance?
Everyone.
Who's everyone?
All fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy.
Are we going to send out another mailer?
Uh, yeah, we'll have to figure out what our, what our advertising will look like for that, but.
So I guess my point is, is if it becomes a, let's just say it's an hour-long meeting, who's running the meeting?
Uh, staff.
Yeah.
Lisa and you.
If it's an hour-long meeting, four o'clock. Who's going to be able to attend that? Can they get off work? Can they?
Well, we may even want to think about maybe like something as late as seven or seven thirty.
Seven.
To get more working people there and they do have time to have dinner and then come to the meeting.
That's late, but yeah.
You know it's late for me.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's late, but that would accommodate, that would accommodate people that want to have family time and then go to a meeting.
Is it all going to be a one-hour event or longer?
I would imagine it'd probably be a little bit longer, it's a lot of stuff to cover.
So, but don't make it two hours, I mean, an hour and a half, I mean, we couldn't fit everything in the other day. And check and make sure there's no, there's no debate on the twenty first, okay?
Okay.
I say make sure there's no new debate on the twenty first.
Yeah, I will let, I will let them know that that's what we have planned and ask them to schedule around.
All the Democratic and Republican.
I'd say seven P M and then go from there.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Any other comments on that? So ten twenty one, seven P M. Place to be determined?
Trailhead.
No, it's a trailhead, trailhead, yeah, Rotary. How many people can they, can they accommodate there?
One hundred.
That's all room allows.
A hundred?
A hundred.
I would be.
You're not going to get a hundred.
We won't get a hundred.
You won't get a hundred.
That would be incredible if we got.
We've got seventy, seventy-five would be great.
Yeah, I mean, you had twenty-five people there last night that weren't on one of the commissions or. So you're going to feed them?
Not at seven, we don't have to.
That's right. I would say water, coffee and donuts, just something light.
Beer and wine?
You'll get more than a hundred then.
You should be part of the planning committee.
Yeah, doesn't the city already have the liquor license from there?
Yeah, something.
Did we have that in the plan?
Beer and wine always brings a crowd.
Look, I have a question in regards to that time, or any time that the city has an outreach. Do we have something that's standardized within the city?
No.
As opposed to making capricious decisions? For different times for different outreach?
I think a lot of it is based on who you're trying to reach and why, and you know, depending on the topic. I think people have different opinions on what the best ways to capture people, so it's really kind of a. On a case-by-case basis.
Well. I would propose that we have at least something standard within the planning commission when we do the outreach. Um, yes, we're going to have to outreach different people, but. It makes it so much easier to plan.
Yeah.
And so much more consistent, it shows that the city is much more organized. We know that if you're going to do something for the city, it's probably going to be a textbook.
And we already have city council meetings at seven and seven.
So there, that's, there's reinforcing, if seven o'clock, it's city time.
Yeah.
Good point, okay.
Anything further? Do we have any citizen comments? Any citizens online? No? All right, on to reports, the secretary's report.
So the only thing that we have is just kind of an update on what we have planned for October. Um, so we'll have a planning update for the climate, um, we'll have our consultants here, we'll, we will be asking you guys to make a recommendation to council to adopt the climate engagement plan. And then we'll also have a workshop on amendments to our emergency housing section of our development code.
So if we have any comments we want to put in writing on the engagement plan, we direct them directly to you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And the changes to the emergency housing amendment will be in our packet?
Yes.
That's it, okay. Planning Commissioner reports, anyone have reports?
Just have a question. Um, we raised this with the city council uh, two months ago or so. The ordinance establishing this, and I know, I don't want any more staff work right now, but. And uh, we have to take a look at the ordinance that establishes a planning commission, we don't have a mission statement, we don't have a vision. Um, we don't really have much of a, anything that has been done since this was signed uh, December eleventh of two thousand and one. And I think we just need to take a look at it again and, and most of the. Commissions have updated ordinances and we may want to. I would say turn this into a little bit more plain language simplified and then have a mission. And with that, whenever we go out and go, going back to what Eugene just said, having a standard time, whenever the planning commission is involved in something. I hope that um, that we, you consider us part of the planning department and that we have something that's there that states the purpose. And the contact people and maybe even the membership of the, of the group that's there. Um, last night was a good start, but we need to, to have something that we can. Have behind us that we could use as a reference and then maybe your handouts, um. Ids and things like that, if we're going to be doing this pretty regularly.
Yeah, we did, we need to create a presence, we did not have a presence last night.
No.
No, you needed a logo.
I, I used, the Friends of the Library logo is what I had.
You got one now. Any other?
Your mission reports?
Moving on. I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
Sure, that's yours.
Move to adjourn, thank you, in a second.
Second.
Thanks, sir. All in favor? Hi, we're done, thank you, everyone. Great discussion.
Good meeting, yeah.